Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November fifteenth, 2023. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to honor executive session to discuss and receive legal advice from counsel, matters related to a particular corporation, and matters relating to the employment history of two or particular individuals. Move by Mr. Blowers.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions carried six zero. Thank you. Thank you for your great evening, everyone. We are returning to our regular meeting, and we are on to, oh, sorry, we have returned from executive session. Yeah, here we are. And we are, we didn't mean to do what we were discussing. It'd be better already.
Yeah.
Item four, agenda changes. There you go.
So we have one agenda change. I'm just going to be moving item A under reports and discussions, item is part one, to superintendent's comments.
Items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Matthew Libra, 1.0 FTE Middle School Assistant Principal, with an anticipated effective date of February thirteenth, 2024. May I have a motion? So move by Mrs. O'Wiler. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brunton. Discussion.
This is your third time, I believe.
Second. Second. This was the eighth year in the district. I graduated from here, so. Probably not something then, too.
Well, you received tenure as a teacher, did you not?
Oh, not, not here.
Oh, okay.
No, that, yeah, so, okay.
So this is your third tenure, though. Yes.
Something of a collection.
The last time I was jumping shift from my old job at the same time, so this time I promise I'm.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, abstentions carried seven zero. Congratulations.
Next time I should probably read the agenda to know this is coming out. What do you mean you don't read the agenda?
You know, I'd just like to say a few words. I know Mr. Brown would like to say a few words as well. You know, we're just really grateful that Matt is with us. He's done a great job both in his role as athletic director and now as assistant principal. He came in and there were some things to change in the athletic area, and he really did a great job in taking us on, creating good, strong relationships, because we all know how that can be a little, you know, a little emotional at times. And so he has done a great job, he forged relationships with parents and other student athletes. And then he talked to me one day about moving over into the building. And the position of assistant principal came open. We talked a little bit about what that would look like. He made a jump, and he's had a great deal of success. Started off at, you know, going between both Parkdale and the middle school, which is, I'll be quite honest, kind of crazy. You know, serving, serving two principals is not easy, because they're, they're a challenge in and of itself. And so, but he did a great job at that. And then we were able to bring on a principal, an assistant principal at Parkdale. And we're great to, gratefully have Andrea with us. And Matt has done a beautiful job in the middle school over the last two years. So really grateful, and congratulations.
Can I just add? So I've now known Matt for about eight years, and when he was the athletic director, I always felt like we had a good friendship. I always knew he was, you know, fun, eager, outgoing, sense of humor is very inconsistent at times, but overall it's pretty good. I was really excited when he came on as assistant principal, but I have to tell you, he blew me away with the way he just connects the students. He's always out and about in the hallways and cafeteria. He's standing out there every morning and greeting students. And he knows probably ninety-five percent of them by name, first and less. He's just so connected to the students, and it's, it's just really impressive. And the way we work together and the entire staff is just a true testament to what an incredible administrator he is. So I'm glad that you have approved this.
And, and the comment on his sense of humor, he has actually a really great sense of humor, but he tells the worst dad jokes in districts. That's.
Well, we're moving on to item seven, superintendent's comments.
So I'll make some, we'll start off with, we'll start off with the, this great, this past weekend. We had a great weekend in our athletic division. We had fourth state champions, which is like almost an impossible achievement. We had three in the area across country, and we're actually going to be recognizing the runners in, in just a few minutes for their, their work of winning the state championship in the spring. Or it was like June, I guess, maybe. Yeah, so it was, so we're recognizing those four state champions tonight, and then we'll be recognizing the, both our boys and girls cross-country teams won the state title, and Emilio O'Leary won the individual title for the girls, which is a really great accomplishment as a junior. So couldn't be more proud of their work and grateful to Mr. and Mrs. McLaughlin, who are their teachers and coaches. And, yeah, it's just an amazing accomplishment. I don't know what else to say. It's just, yeah, it's just, it just doesn't happen. It just honestly doesn't happen. And we also had our boys soccer team win their first state title. The runners have had numerous state titles under your leadership, and we're grateful for that. And our boys soccer team also took the state title, which is a huge feat. And we're appreciative to Coach Beal, who has been here for many decades. And this is his first state title with our team, and he's gotten very close over the years. But again, a tremendous accomplishment for our boys as well. So I know Mr., Mr. Roberts, did you want to share a few words?
Sure. Oh, yeah, Mr. Lombardo sent this to me. These are not my words, but, but I think very appropriate. So as Mr. Russ said, an unprecedented weekend for East Aurora Athletics, but, but frankly, I'd say any athletic program across the state or the country, to, to claim three different team state championships and an individual state championship. And it's a credit to our wonderful coaches, too, that are here today, and the dedication that they display each and every day, year after year after year, season after season after season. The boys soccer team, as Mr. Russ said, won their first state title in program history, and only the fourth state title in section six history in any class of soccer. I think if you saw the video of our normally stoic Coach Beal, it told you what you needed to know about how much work went into this title and how much it meant to our team. And I had a follow-up conversation with him the day after, and the emotions were still very raw. In addition, the boys cross-country team won the state title, and that's a year after not reaching the state meet. So credit again to Coach McLaughlin on how they took that experience last year and turned it into a positive for our boys. The boys played three in the top thirteen, with Owen Run finishing as the runner. We want to congratulate him on committing to Cornell for his college running and academic next step. Possibly the most dominant performance of the weekend, though, belongs to our girls cross-country team. Amelia O'Leary, as Mr. Russ said, took the individual title, and that's a repeat for her, as he said. And the girls won their fourth straight title, placing their entire top five runners in the top twenty-three overall, including four of the top seven. That's Amelia O'Leary, Kalen Hope, Catherine Shodeman, and Riley Pierce. They were also second overall in the merge when the results from all the schools, large and small, were put together. So a successful athletic season culminating with possibly, as Lombardo says here, the most successful weekend in school history. I'm going to go out on a limb and say it was. And we're going to be honoring those teams and individuals in school next Tuesday afternoon, but I'm sure at the Board of Education meeting in the near future.
So we're going to wait for a little bit. Just, it's going to be. So, yeah, we're just waiting for a few of the girls to get here today, so we'll, we'll continue on. Superintendent's comments, though, I think that's good.
Okay, so I suggest we move on to board presidents and board member comments, and then we'll circle back. Oh, sorry, legislation. Thank you. Joe can read better than I can. Is there any legislation?
Um, no.
Item nine, board presidents and board member comments. The policy committee met, and, oh, sorry, Mr. Member.
I'm here. No, I'm good.
And Mr. Mambrady has proposed a review plan. So as, as you all know, we have completed the complete policy review. That was first half. And Mr. Mambrady can explain the plans for the policy review?
So what the current plan is, the entire manual was reviewed over the course of the last school year. Excuse me. I had something in my throat. And there are a few, just little editing and cleaning up things that, that really don't change the policies, but I'm working with Policy Services to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. At the exact same time, Policy Services is rebranding and relaunching how they're doing business. There was a webinar today I was unable to attend. They are going to mail it to, or email it to me, and will share it with the committee. Because of that, our current proposal is that we put the entire policy manual on a five-year review cycle like we do our curriculum, knowing that the entire manual will be looked at at some point during five years. At the exact same time, obviously, if there's a need or a desire, nothing prevents us from looking at individual ones. If there's a change in law or regulation or Policy Services, we do subscribe to Policy Services monthly policy alerts, where they recommend that districts look at it. So we're going to kind of take two tracks. One is going to be either as local need or as law, regulation, or Policy Services says look at this, we will look at it. At the same time, there's certain policies that just sit there forever, and nobody ever looks at them. This will force us to look at them at least on that five-year cycle. So what I have in front of you is what we propose. The thought is with Policy Services kind of retooling how they provide their offerings, they're very, very happy with how our manual is currently. So we take this year just to kind of let Policy Services figure out what they're doing and getting their dust settled, and then year one of the policy review cycle would be next year. We look at two sections per year, except one of the five years in the cycle, there's a, it's only one section, because that's a very large section, and that's students, which obviously has the most nuance and impact. Go from there. That's what we're proposing to all of you.
Very much. Are there any policies that have to be reviewed annually?
Yeah, so we're finishing up. I'm cross-checking with Policy Services. There's ones that have to be reviewed annually, ones that have to be reviewed periodically. We're double-checking what that, we're going to have a chart of that. So the thought is those, what it basically is, if the policy doesn't need to be quote-unquote changed or reviewed by the committee, they do have to be reviewed by the board. So those policies will be on the annual reorganization meeting, where you'll get them ahead of time. It's really more, the review is more to keep them in the board's forefront of your mind than it is because the policies need that frequent review in terms of change. They need to be reviewed in terms of practice. So you will have, and I, there's a couple that I didn't want to come up with my final list yet, because we're going back and forth on a couple, on is it annual, is it periodic, is it, you know, whatever. So we'll have an actual nice list of things that we have to do every year, and then what we'll do is each year, review two sections of the book. And then obviously, as things change or come up.
Other questions? We continue work. Other comments of many board members attended and superintendents attended the New York State School Board Association Convention that was conveniently located in Buffalo in October, and there was a lot of learning in there. I suggest that we go through our notes, pull the presentations that you enjoyed. I will, I have a shared folder for us to. Great, thank you. Did they say the seventeenth was the last day to, was it notes online? That's a great question. I don't know. I want to say it was the seventeenth, because our last day to use the provided slides. Okay, so could I suggest that everyone pull their slides? I think that you can pull them as PDF and put them in the shared Google Drive, and then we all have access to them. And also put them in the library if you'd like. Thank you. We can do either or both, as long as we have them all. Maybe throw them in the Google file, and then I can point Beth to it, and she can upload them to the library, so we can keep them. And then when we find the capacity, maybe after the holidays, we can do another workshop to review the highlights of the things that we didn't all attempt. Sound fair? Okay, thank you. And I want to thank Mrs. O'Wiler and all the administrators for coordinating the visitation to the schools. We had to tour all three buildings, and that was informative and helpful, as always. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with teachers and visit. Thank you for putting it all together, and it makes it so much easier for us to understand things as we get through the budget process. Bethany.
Ms. Proda. All right, Mrs. Improta. This was my first year attending the conference, and I know everyone else has been able to go. I have to say, and I'll be super excited to share the things that I attended, because I learned so much. But it was also really nice to meet the different school districts, people from the different school districts, large and small, rural and city, and just to see the challenges that they're having and be able to, to just get a better perspective on our, where we sit within all those school districts. So I really appreciate the district allowing us to go to that. That was great. The, we met with the, Mrs. Daniel and I met with the Athletic Advisory Committee, which is the coaches, Mr. Lombardo, some student representatives, and the update was on, we had an update on fall sports, which we know was successful, and also had a high attendance. It was something like three hundred and ninety-six students were involved in fall sports. I could be wrong on that, that number, but it was a lot. And then the, we also received an update on just the benefits and completeness of boosters and plans for just, plans, just not plans, just of boosters. Update on winter sports, and also the continued mental health support for athletes, students, and parents, how that's provided each, each season. I did have the opportunity to go to the Pops concert in the end of October, which was excellent as usual at the high school. And then last night's middle school choral concert at the high school, also amazing, grades five through eight. Just, it was beautiful to sit here, as always. And then we did have a DPC meeting, but will you, do you want to shut that off? Okay, so that's about it. It's been a really busy month.
Yep, okay. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's involved with Monday night's incredible experience, Mr. Roberts and Mrs. Roberts, those hundred and sixty-five-plus members of our district, students, staff, teachers, administration, that attended the Bills game and unfrothed the flag, and it was a huge flag. And it was, it was an absolutely incredible experience. So thank you, Mr. Roberts, for allowing all of our students and teachers and everyone else, including myself, to have that experience. Next, I attended the Curriculum and Textbook Committee meeting. And you'll see on your agenda that we will be approving that tonight. The novel is titled "The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night" by Mark Hayden. And this is going to be used in English X and AP Language and Composition. Mr. Cummins chose this book because the main character is autistic, and there's not a lot of books where you have main characters or any characters for that meaning being autistic. And he's hoping that the readers are going to sympathize with the main character, and then it will start to teach them some more empathy. The book, oh, sorry, I say about the book. It's about a fifteen-year-old boy, takes place in England, and he lives with his father. And, and I have not read the book, but it's something I definitely want to read. Sounds really, really interesting. Yes, it is. I also attended the DPC, which is the District Parent Council, for those of you that do not know what that stands for, meeting October twenty-fifth. Parkdale, just run down really quickly, they're funding the monthly assemblies, and they switched photographers this year, Parkdale did. The PTO is now going with Life Touch. The middle school did the same thing as well, but they're also not going with it, which is new. The Parkdale parents, or the Parkdale PTO did mention that they do have some concern with the access point to the playgrounds, that it's so open, and I know it's just something that was brought up also at the safety meeting as well. Middle school, very hard to get volunteers, very hard for membership, so they're trying to address that, and this is something we hear every single year from the, from the council. And one thing that I thought was really interesting for the high school, ninety percent of the activities that the PTO runs at the high school are student-generated. It's not the PTO telling the kids what to do, it's the kids coming to them and saying, we would like to do this, and the, and the PTO is saying, absolutely. So I thought that was a really, it's great that the kids are actually doing it. Kim, is, Mrs. Daniel's going to talk about our safety meeting. The one thing I will mention is I did find the Nationals at the convention. I kept going back, because no one was there, because our representative, Luanne, has not been showing up to our safety meetings, and I wanted to find them and find out why she's not showing up. And I found out from Mike, who used to be our rep, she no longer is with the company. So that's why she's not present here anymore, and he is supposed to be giving us the information of the new person. I'm hoping that he hasn't gotten that yet, but I do not know. And, let's see. I think that is it. Oh, the one other thing I wanted to mention to everyone, I'm sure you all saw this already, it'll be in the onboard, about the state commission that recommended sweeping changes to the New York State graduation requirements. So if you've not seen this. It's, it's pretty, that's going to be a lot of work for some people, and interestingly, enough, though, there's nothing as far as how it's going to be done, it's been determined yet, but I thought it was really interesting. It's going to be a pretty challenging. Some of it they're already doing, so that's. Yeah, some of it they're already doing, but it's going to be pretty challenging to, to do all of these total recommendations when it comes to that. And that's it. Thank you, Mrs. O'Wiler. Mr. Blowers, anything?
There's kind of a lame excuse about the University of National person not showing up. I'm not part of this, and I keep showing up.
I hunted her down. I hunted them down, that's the, Mr. Blowers, any comments, any other?
I do. Besides that, I do. I attended the Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Meeting on October nineteenth. Several items were discussed, with the main focus on the survey results, and a legislative dinner that will be held tomorrow evening. I will be attending that dinner. Regarding the survey, the top five priorities that are in play by Erie County School Boards are equitable funding, school special education support programs, early childhood education, teacher and staff recruitment and retention, and school safety measures. So fourteen they listed, those are the top five that will be hitting the legislative tomorrow as a priority, but we'll be sharing the other items as well. And we have our representative, Senator Galvin, and a subliminal DPH, we'll be sending a representative to the dinner, so that's a, that's a good improvement there. Senator Galvin usually does. So I'll be attending that, and I'll report back on that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing how that goes. Mr. Ruston?
Nothing this evening.
Daniel? Mrs. O'Wiler and I attended the safety meeting on October twentieth, and I'm just going to go through the notes, a lot of things that were covered. The first thing is we did receive a handout, it's called SHEL, which is, it stands for the New York State Emergency Response, and shelter in place, hold in place, evacuate, lockout, and lockdown. And from the meeting, they were talking about how they're trying to get that language to be something consistent throughout the district, so that, and parents are also, I believe, have been provided with this, and they're becoming familiar with this language also. So just in terms of the district using the same language for that. We talked about the high school, they completed their fire drills, their evacuations, and then lockdown drills, and down to seven seconds for the lockdown. They are, there are no issues in the high school, they did the blockout exit, that all went well. We discussed a program that's now live, and it's, I believe, six through eighth grade, as well as the high school, which is the Sandy Hook.
Promise.
Promise. It's Say Something. So basically, it's a program where it's, a student can anonymously report twenty-four-seven any type of concern that they have, and then there will be some type of follow-up in contact. So that is, that's in place, and I think it's just been in place since October, so it's a very new program. So that's something that they're kind of working out the kinks, but has been used, so. And that is controlled externally by a third party, so that the student or whomever would anonymously call in, and then they would get information and follow up with that information and reach out to the, the proper person. So. The middle school, they have also practiced their blockout exit drills, they have changed their evacuation site from the church to the Roycroft campus for all four grades, because it just, it worked out better space-wise. So it says they're using the powerhouse, and they all fit in the powerhouse, so that's where they're going for that. Let me just speak quickly. So they're ninety percent complete on their lockdown drills for Parkdale. They also have done the same thing in terms of this fall with their evacuation drills, and all of that has gone very well. Building grounds, they are focusing on the fire doors and the automatic release on the alarms, so they said some doors are still being propped open, so they're just following up with that to make sure that that is not happening. So that was one of the things we asked about, and then just some of the doors are warped and mechanical, so we're just doing all types of follow-up to make sure that all of those things are in proper working order. Transportation reported that there is still driver shortages. Regular school days due from athletics in terms of when they're reporting the students. They're teaching the younger students how to put on seatbelts. Three of the buses do have monitors, and they've just added one more monitor to the bus, but they haven't been reporting any types of problems generally. And one of the things from technology that they reported on is that we do have up and running now, our second internet provider has been established. So if spectrum goes down, and that's adable under the budget, we're going to have a backup plan for our phones, for our cameras, and for our Wi-Fi. So that was a big gap, and now that's been filled, so that was something. The discovery, or, excuse me, the disaster recovery plan is also in place, so. I'm just looking. Athletics, AEDs are available for all the coaches indoor, you have the AED available in the gym. For outdoors, each coach has an AED with them, so that's, that's, that's in place. And then I, we spoke just generally about the mental health, which I know Mrs. Improta touched on, that they're doing that with athletics, with both the coaches and the students. So I think that's, yeah, that basically covers it. Dana Sankey. The only thing I'll just reiterate is something that they said to us was that all three buildings are going, and both of the young ones required by the state, as far as the fire drills, the evacuation, and the lockdown drills. We do more than was required. So, but obviously, a lot of information provided in the safety meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the updates. I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendents.
So, yeah, so we, it's a special event. We are here to celebrate our girls' four-by-eight-hundred state championship. This happened, I believe, in June, in June, and so we're trying to coordinate this, and I know what I'll have to do next year is have to do this in September, October, so it doesn't overlap with the next JFU. It's a little, we're going to be pretty great here, here every month for the next several months. But again, just an amazing accomplishment, and these four young ladies have accomplished so much. I'll probably leave it to the coaches to talk about that, because I'll be honest, it's hard to keep up with. Every season, they do so well, which is extraordinary. I personally have been involved in the, in the running program, and have experienced some success, but not to this level. These, these girls are extraordinary, just completely dedicated and talented and wonderful young ladies, and we are so proud to recognize them tonight. And so I'll just call them up one at a time. First is Kalen Hope. Next is Amelia O'Leary. Next is Riley Pierce. Want to say something?
Yeah, definitely. Just thank you for.
Just thank you for recognizing the girls tonight. I just want to say like their success is just really a credit to our district. We're so proud to be East Aurora. It's just amazing people around the state. These guys coming in our athletes and it's really pretty awesome. I think our administrators at meetings around the state, they hear about our programs and not just running programs, but soccer and other successes. And our success starts here. It starts with your support. It starts at our buildings with administrative support and it just trickles down to what we're able to do and provide the opportunities. And as you know, athletics is a part of the overall umbrella here at East Aurora. Sometimes we think it's the only, the biggest part, but it's a, it's a part. And it's, and we're proud to be, you know, a big part of that. So what the girls were able to do is just tremendous. Just to put it in perspective, we've been literally chasing that relay win for over 20 years, you know. We've been second place, less than a second. You have to be the best. Not only the best in the state, you have to be the best on that day. You almost have to have a perfect race, perfect handoffs, perfect strategy, and these guys were able to put it together. So it's really, you know, over 20 years, it's like, oh, second. It's just fighting for that. And what they were able to do just really puts it into context. Sometimes we think these things happen easy because maybe you might see us up here at different times, but it's, there's nothing easy about it. These girls are working year-round in what they're doing and are some of the top students in their classes as well. So they're, they're well-rounded, doing an awesome job, so super proud.
Thank you. We're all Marty McLaughlin, your coaches. I think we all know them. The record speaks for themselves, their level of dedication, and what they do for our student athletes is just extraordinary and we're really grateful for the seasons that have served us. Decades of coaching, which is not easy, you know how it is, but they just do a great job every single day and go above and beyond and we're just so grateful for both of you. I want to thank the parents because I understand that as well. It's a huge commitment on your part, lots of cool, rainy days and nights, right, that you have to, you're there, but the celebration is definitely worth it. Your efforts are extraordinary and I'm sure you love participating, but it's a lot of work as well and your support for that is what makes this happen. So I know Mr. Lombardo couldn't be with us tonight, but Mr. Roberts is going to say a few words on his behalf.
Sure. He seems reiterating a little bit of what Walt just said, but still worth mentioning again. So after winning last year's cross-country title in the fall, and obviously again this year, the girls' team set the goal of winning the state title in the 4x800, something that had been a program goal, as Mr. McLaughlin said, for quite some time, and in Mr. Lombardo's words, had been an albatross of the program, having been a runner-up for some eight times. Running at the time in eighth grader, two freshmen and a sophomore, managed to win the first state title in the event. And obviously, with so many runner-up finishes, the girls knowing the history, it takes quite a special group to be mature enough, on that day, to accomplish the task. For them to manage the pressure of the situation speaks to the confidence their coaches have instilled in them. So Mr. Lombardo wanted to congratulate you. And if I can go off script for a minute, Amelia and I were on the field Monday night and we were chatting and she said, "Could you get Mrs. Kibler's attention?" So again, picture this, we're, we're on the field, there's 60,000 crazy fans, right? The Broncos are wandering around us on the sideline and Amelia says, "Could you, could you get Mrs. Kibler's attention?" So I walked from Amelia over to Mrs. Kibler and they waved to each other and Mrs. Kibler then tells me that she just sent Amelia a picture from, help me out, second grade? Second grade. And you did a running unit? And not shockingly, it was a picture of her from second grade with a medal around her neck for probably winning miles, right? So it was a neat story and one that I'll never forget. We're, we're in this like Monday night football atmosphere in front of millions of people and Amelia is remembering second grade and running and maybe in some ways where it all started. So it was a special moment, I know for Mrs. Kibler, and made it a special moment for me, but I also think it speaks to Amelia and, and the quartet here of just special athletes, not only, but really special people. And we're fortunate to call them East Aurora Devils. So congratulations, guys. We're proud of you.
Coincidentally, that state meet was at Middletown High School where our boys just won the soccer state championship. State facility. I think this is our favorite.
Yeah, you have to say that. I understand.
Are there any administrators who would like to share anything with the board this evening? Sharing none. Anyone else?
The decades dance was so fun.
Okay, moving on. Then no one has.
I could comment on the decades dance, yes, but the decades dance was so fun. Everything I was, it was an incredible concert last year. It was a fun, great soloist.
On the gloomy away, they're just so good. The decades dance, we have had our first dance. We had about 200, we believe, 280 to 300 students were there.
Which is terrific. Because typically, our seventh and eighth graders don't enjoy coming to the decades dance because it's a lot of fifth and sixth graders, but this year, we had more participation than we've had before. It was very. And then lastly, Matt and I were talking the other day just about how we value the board visits, you know, when we come into the building and just taking the time to hear what's going on, we do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Move it. Thank you all for being here. Item 11 from the board comments. First, I'd like to remind everyone that we received an invitation prior to the NISBA convention from Harris Beach and we received an email from Mrs. Horning with a series of questions. And you received those. Yes, thank you. And Mrs. Horning.
First of all, before my time starts, I'm going to ask, I can read this to you in three minutes easily. I'm not sure if my speed reading will allow full comprehension.
Okay.
So if I could take a little extra time, you know, if that would be possible. If not, I'll just do it in three minutes.
If you have something you would like to share with us that you'd like us to digest, please email us because we do read your emails.
Okay.
And if you want to give us a synopsis in three minutes, that would be preferable.
I don't know that I'm prepared to do that. I, you know, like I said, I can just buzz through it quickly or I can take, if I can, you know, have a little extra time.
You know the drill. You know how, you know how we're set up and you know that we'll happily read anything you send to us and I would suggest you keep it as close to three minutes as you can.
So I need to speed read.
Okay. You can hear your comments as you, of course, we'll let you go a little over if you're getting into the five-minute territory. I'm going to ask.
No, it shouldn't be.
Because you're a regular and you know how we operate.
Exactly. Exactly. And there's so many other commenters.
We're delighting in having efficient meetings. If you would like to share anything, we've already taken up more time. If you would like to share anything, an email, though, you do know we're going to read it.
Okay.
If you have anything longer that you'd like us to read, I can promise you that we will do our reading on our own time.
Very good. All right, so.
Diligent volunteers that we are.
Thank you. Last month, the board accepted the annual external audit report, which was a clean report. Of course, you know that a clean report cannot assure against fraud, waste, and abuse, nor can it verify against every possible error. In fact, boards are warned against relying exclusively on an audit report to protect the district from financial risk. I refer you to page two of the New York State Comptroller's Management Guide on Internal Controls. As you learn from mandatory board training, it takes a strong tone at the top to deter fiscal risk. To be clear, tone at the top is referring to the monitoring purpose, monitoring of policies and internal controls as well as creating a culture of accountability and transparency through example. Also, a board in management should be alert to red flags. At this point, I'm struggling to see your accountability through monitoring of EA's policy number 1020, which requires that individual members of the audit committee for which the law requires three or more must be appointed at the annual organizational meeting in July. However, no audit committee members were named and appointed according to the minutes of at least the last three years. Additionally, no other names except Mr. Blowers and Mr. Brunson are listed on the website as members of this committee. No other individuals representing the audit committee, except Mr. Blowers and Mr. Brunson, were present for the audit report to the board for at least the past three years. No minutes or annual report of audit committee meetings were reported to the board or discussed in public per Commissioner's Regulation. You see, the lack of transparency of this very important committee leaves some taxpayers struggling to trust the board. struggling to trust the Board. Why is this important? One, because members of the Audit Committee have special status. They are deemed School District Officers for purposes of liability. Two, because the law requires that the Audit Committee perform specific duties, and they have a detailed reporting function. These duties and communications help to set the tone at the top and reduce fiscal risk. Three, because the law requires the Audit Committee have a minimum of three members at a quorum for any meeting. Transparency and compliance with law sets the tone at the top. More importantly, having an active and transparent Audit Committee could have prevented past fiscal issues that were red flags. I am referring to the five consecutive years EA was on the State Comptroller's Fiscal Stress List. In almost all cases, EA was the only Erie County School District on the list. Of even greater concern, it is an oddity for a low-need district to be on these lists at all, only about 1.5% statewide. It's especially remarkable that, in 2017, our district was just one of two districts in the whole state experiencing...
You have three minutes, I'll give you a couple seconds to wrap up, if you don't mind.
Okay, I'll just finish my last paragraph. Significant fiscal stress. Another red flag deprived taxpayers of keeping their money in 2021, specifically a violation of real property tax law, was cited in the 2021 external audit report due to EA with only 3.3-plus million more than allowable in fund balance. EA is standing at the edge of a new risk cliff when temporary federal and state aid will come to a screeching halt in 2024. I urge the Board to read the State Comptroller's warnings in this latest fiscal stress monitoring report for school districts, and to be transparent with the public in discussions on resolving this urgent issue.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mrs. Horning.
I did actually print that out, just in case.
Thank you.
Because there's references to policies and laws.
I would like to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, which was to point out that the Audit Committee could not prevent the 2008 financial collapse, nor the gap elimination years to which the district and many others were subject, and there was no getting around those.
And I was just going to say the same thing.
Melody? All right, we will move on to reports and discussion items. Item A in the Pupil Services Report, thank you.
It didn't bring copies, because I'm assuming you all have them, because they're all uploaded? Okay, perfect. So, you have all of the numbers and the data, and like last year, this is more of a summary. I'm not going to go through all of the data, because you have copies of it, and I have time at the end where you can ask any questions. And, oh, there we go. And my co-teacher or my assistant is not here with me tonight, she bailed on me. Erin was with me last year. She's still recovering from state this weekend, because her son's on the varsity soccer team, so I was like, okay, I'll let you recover. Just as a reminder, Pupil Services, Erin and I think that we should change the name of our department to Pupil Services, Grant and Financial Management, and State Reporting, because that encompasses pretty much everything that we do. It's so much more than just special education. So, as you can see, AIS, ENL Services, homeschool services, related services, family support center, oops, I'll get used to this, federal state grant management, including UPK grant, Medicaid billing, stacking, and civil rights data collection, and on top of all the state reporting that we have to do. So, everything in special education really is driven by the blueprint for improved results that State Ed has provided us. And that's basically just a framework for improved results for students with disabilities. And there's really seven principles here. And just as a reminder, those seven principles really, this is what the state measures us on, and those seven principles include self-advocacy and goal-setting for students, MTSS systems for academic and behavioral support, parent and family engagement, inclusion, specially-designed instruction, but those are basically the seven principles that we have to report on to State Ed, and that's what we're measured on. So, there's the State Performance Plan, an annual performance report. Some of the 17 indicators that we report on, we report once every six years. So, what I've included in the report is how we did on the last one we reported on, and keeping in mind that this data is from '21-'22, the state's that far behind in reporting. So, those are the 17 indicators, and as you can see in the '22-'23 school year, we reported on preschool outcomes, so I can give you the results of that next year, when they report, when the state releases that data. This year, '23-'24, we are reporting on parental involvement, which involved us sending out a survey to all 297 families, and fingers crossed that 69 of those families will return that survey, because that's the number that the state is mandating that we get back. So, those surveys have gone out, and I'll report on those in two years. So, not very timely. But, some things that we do report on, oh, actually, this is indicator 14, which we reported on. This is, they interviewed students with IEPs one year after leaving high school in June of 2021. So, this is that data. So, indicator 14 measures post-school outcomes. So, how did our students do once they left high school? So, there's the state targets that they expect us to meet, and the percent who were enrolled in higher education, they wanted that state target to be 37%, so they interviewed 10 students. We fell a little bit short, we needed another .7% of a student to attend college, but we had three. But, then, it keeps going down. So, the percent who were enrolled in higher education or competitively-employed, so who went into employment, we beat that target, because the target's 66%, so 70% of those students. And then, the last one is the percent who were enrolled in higher education, or some post-secondary education or training, or competitively-employed, or in some other employment, and again, 90% of those students, or nine out of the 10, were in the state target of 76%. Then, the things that we report on every year, so we upload all of this data, graduation rate, which I think is something that's important for us to monitor and keep track of, because we want our students graduating, our students with disabilities. So, for the 2020-2021 school year, 81.8% of our students graduated with a regular high school diploma. So, that doesn't mean that the rest were dropouts, because we do have some students that they exit when they're 21 with a skills and achievement credential. So, that, I just want to make sure that you're aware that that doesn't mean that there's 20% that dropped out. That's just the ones that received diplomas. And actually, we beat that target, because the state target for that is 71%, so we are beating that target. This is the data on least restrictive environment, or inclusion, as I like to call it. This is the data that Erin and I presented to you last year. Remember, that state target was greater than or equal to 60%. Well, the 2021-'22 school year, even though the state dropped their target to 58.25%, which they tend to do that, I don't know why, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down, we are, even though in the two age groups we're not meeting that target, we have seen some, the 5- to 7 age group actually went from 44.4% up to 49.7%, and even the high school, the 14- to 21, went from 66.3% up to 70.8%. So, those students aged 12 to 13, there's still some improvement that we're working on with including students in that least restrictive environment. And then this, I shared this last year, because I just love this quote, but Erin updated it for me, because when we were looking at the PowerPoint and going through it, we're like, wait a second, 1 in 20 children have a disability, that doesn't just give 19 kids a daily opportunity to learn about diversity and collaboration, it gives 20 out of 20. So, some highlights and accomplishments of what we've been working on. Inclusion, fully-integrated co-teaching at Parkdale this year. I'm very proud to say, with the help of Andrea and Tahani and many people, we actually have fully-integrated co-teaching at every grade level. Last year was our first year, so you're going to see that number go up again with next year's reporting, but at every grade level, we have fully-inclusive classrooms, which means we have a special ed teacher and a agenda teacher together all day with their students, just providing support the full day. And the feedback that we've been getting from not just the teachers, the parents, but even kids, like even the little children have made comments about, wow, you know, this is wonderful. So, OT services provided by the district, you know that we've gone to our own OT providers this year, that's been working out very well. Expansion of ENL services to meet growing need. When you look at the data in the full report, you can see that we've tripled the number of ENL students, which that's, you're like, tripled, we went from two to seven, but we still have to provide services to meet their needs. So, maximization of Medicaid billing. Erin and Melissa, our new registrar secretary for Medicaid billing, have worked really, really hard on getting consents back from parents, and billing for things that we haven't billed for traditionally in the past, like transportation, evaluations, nursing services. So, we're really trying to make sure that we're capturing all the money that we're able to capture for that. Improvements to homebound instruction program. We've had a lot of difficulty with finding tutors, or people that are willing to work with our students that are homebound, so we've gone to a new program that we're trying this year called Full Mind, so far, so good. Professional development. When we talk about least restrictive environment and inclusion, it's not so easy as just putting students in a class, because when you talk to some teachers, there's some, you know, tools that they need to be successful for this to work. So, we've continued to work on, you know, co-teaching training. Susan Hens, we had brought her in district the previous year. This year, we worked with Orchard Park, and we're able to send, because they had her come in for training, and we were able to send a lot of our new teachers there this year. We're still working with Jackie Hannivan and Nancy Boshaw. They come in and they help mentor our new teachers. Orton Gillingham Training and Certification, I have two teachers that have gone through the training and should be certified this year, which helps us with providing that Tier 3 reading instruction, especially at Parkdale. Grant-funded training by Summit on Inclusive Practices, so next Wednesday, when we have our next superintendent's conference day, I've worked with Jess, we have Summit coming in, and Dr. Mike and Baum will be at Parkdale, and all of our special ed teachers also will be attending, but it's all of the Parkdale staff, and he's going to be presenting training on inclusive practices. We've had him come in and work with some middle school staff before, and I know Matt and Matt have had a chance to sit in on it, and he's really, he's an amazing presenter. He's very practical, even though he has a PhD, he's very practical, and he's very well-received by our teachers. So, if you're available and you want to come see him, it's always interesting to listen to him. And then, we have our own CPI-trained staff to help prevent and de-escalate crises. This is something that we're required to have, the state requires us to do it. So, again, working with Jessica, we have two of our own staff that are trained as trainers that train our staff, and that's like a six-hour recertification for our staff and a 12-hour new certification, so it really helps us to have that flexibility, to have our own people in-house to do this. Preschool, preschool's always, something always new with preschool. So, we're up to five classrooms this year, and we have, we talked about last year, our integrated classroom, well, we had provisional approval the first year we ran it. This year, we have our final approval by the state, so we have our permanent approval for that. And we also were able to operate, in addition to our regular summer programming, a ESY program for our preschool classroom. Last year, we had state approval for that also. And then, the SPOT program is something we started this year. It's a collaborative push-in lesson between speech, OT, and the teachers, and I think that's been very well-received. It gives eyes on the preschoolers and helps with some early interventions that they may need, and it also, it's a nice opportunity for the teachers to learn from our speech therapists and our OTs on things that they can do in the classroom to help build those Our Family Support Center is still up and running and doing very well. They have, I believe, Jamie told me, like, 88 referrals in the past year of families for various things that they need help with. There are still our parent speaker events that Jamie works with Jessica on, working with The Rock to expand the snack pack program, that's a program where they send food home with our Parkdale students, and now they're expanding it to middle and high school. Establishing our Promote Youth program, that is a program through the county where they come in and do work with our high school students on transitioning, because transition is important, whether they're going on to work, or college, or as you saw in that one indicator. And then, currently, they're doing, the Family Support Center, Jamie's running a sport and EA apparel drive. I don't know if you've seen the flyers around, or if you saw the announcement that went out, but that's something, we do a lot of spirit days, and sometimes we want to make sure that everybody's included in that, whether they're able to purchase their own, or we're able to provide sports apparel for them to participate in those spirit days. Future plans, I've been contacted by two parents that are very excited to start a special ed PTO. So, they're planning, they've met with Sarah Horning, and also, they have met with people from Orchard Park who have a special ed PTO, and they're planning on meeting with the PTO, I believe, the November 20th meeting? Yeah, to talk about that. So, they're very, very excited about that, and their students, they were very excited that we brought one of the 811 classes back, and that their children are included, and they're very excited to start this program. And our ESY program for summer programming, we're looking at expanding that next summer, and again, that's all state-funded, we get funding back for all of our ESY programs. And then, Ecollect is our new, we're trying to streamline processes also, because right now, our registration process is like 30 pages, that parents get emailed to them and have to fill out, and then somebody has to data entry, all that, data enter, all of that. So, we've been working with Christie's Department and really streamlining that whole registration process, so the whole thing will be electronic. Pupil Services Report, as I said, you already have a copy of that, so if there's any questions on any of those, if you've gone through that, you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions before we go on to the enrollment report, which you also have a copy of.
Anybody have questions? Yep, Mr. Blowers?
You know what you just talked about?
Uh-huh. Special ed PTO.
This is officially out of the Board. You're warned over and over, or at least not warned, advised, certain things you can say, you can't say, when it comes to special education and students and that. This seems like more of a wide-open situation that doesn't violate any of that.
What, the special ed PTO?
Yes.
No, that's something, it's a parent-run organization, just like our PTO, and sometimes it's like part of that PTO, or it can be separate. And, no, they have, there's a whole state organization, and they actually have special ed PTOs at a lot of our neighboring districts, like Orchard Park, Clarence, so if you're talking about like confidentiality or anything like that...
Yes, definitely. It's always a concern, whether you're sitting here, or sitting in the business office, wherever, but, okay, it doesn't cross that path, then?
No.
It's all parent-driven, then?
Yeah.
They talk about their own children and stuff in there, or...
I don't even know if it's really for them to talk about their own children, but to talk about events and different things that they can do to be part of the PTO.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, so, then, the Student Enrollment Report. So, you also have the Student Enrollment Report, it's like 30 pages of lots of charts and graphs, so we really just sort of took the important information out of that. So, this is our last enrollment for the past three years, and remember, this is a number that always fluctuates throughout the year, as we have children coming and going, so this is a Bed Stuy number, so this is on that October, whatever Bed Stuy was this year, 3rd, 7th, something like that. So, that's our enrollment. The first line is our in-district, so 1,647 students that are in-district. The second line is the EA residents that are in non-public schools, that their parents send them to, you know, it doesn't even have to be like a school within our district, it could be Kenesha's, wherever they're sent. And then, the homeschooled students, so there are 83 homeschooled students, for a total of 1,892, but this year, we included our pre-K students also. So, you can see the number of pre-K students that we've had for the past three years. So, our pre-K students are not included in that 1,892. Okay, and then, on the next slide, we have a company in Michigan that does the projection for us for the next three years out, so this is our projected enrollment for 24... So, this is our projected enrollment for '24, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27. So, looking at the projections, it's looking very stable. I think, according to the report, there was like a 1% change, but really, 1,647. 1,647.
I looked at last year's reports that you gave us, and our enrollment this year, based on last year's estimate, was only supposed to be 1,635.
See that? We're doing better.
Exactly.
Yep.
I just wanted to point out quickly, if anyone was paying attention to the last slide, I don't know what's posted online, but I think there's a typo.
On the last one? This one?
Yeah. So, our total enrollment is actually up. So, I think that on the report we have, it says 1916.
Oh, the total.
I just wanted to point that out, because it gives.
Which report?
See, the 1892 is, and the third column should be higher than that.
Oh, 1916. Oh, okay. Erin apologized.
So, that's something that people take very seriously, whether our enrollment is going up or down, so I want to point out.
I will definitely change that. Okay, so that 2324 should be, is it correct in the actual report report?
It's correct in the actual report.
Okay, got it.
Correct, correct.
Correct, correct, on the report report. Got it. 1916, okay. So, we will change that. And then, here's the projected for the next three years out.
And again, I'm sorry. I'm behind you. No, no, that does not include that 1,650, that you're not including anything with pre-K.
No, that's why we put the pre-K numbers.
Right, so these are all going to be numbers that if these students stay in the district, it's additional.
Yep. So, questions?
Well, just a comment. When you consider the impact of student enrollment in the district as a whole, you have to consider the pre-K students. The Parkdale now has six grade levels, not five, like it has had in the past. There's 700 students at Parkdale. So, this affects the whole school district, in particular, Parkdale. It puts, we are servicing a significantly larger number of students than we have in the past, and that growth has occurred over the last three years. So, I think anyone who thinks that somehow our enrollment is decreasing is wrong. Our enrollment is increasing, and in the past three years, it has increased significantly. Thank you.
And anyone who thinks that we don't need the administrators that we have is wrong too, because we've got two administrators dealing with 700 children, and that's a lot of, a lot of work.
And the only reason that I don't have them included, like on this chart, is they're not included in the forecasting portion of it, because that number is not, we talked about this last year, that number is capped at the number of spots we have. It's not a true number of the total number of pre-K students. So, they don't include it when they're doing the projections. So, that's why I have them listed separately on the bottom, because you're right, they are an important part, and it's a large part, 80 students this year.
Well, for sure. And they're not second-class students who were just kept as a postscript to our other activities. They are the foundation of the whole program.
Yes, so, okay.
I do have a comment, though. What I do like is that when we see the actual, I really appreciate these numbers, because you can see also fluctuation, and as anybody who's worked in the school knows, like some classes, that's a class, you know, graduating class, and you've retained most of them, and it's 128, sometimes it's 150, sometimes it's, and it's not always having to do, it's a lot of times having to do how many kids were born that year.
Like that big year.
And then, when you see things that are, like, numbers are so fun, because you can really, they can be manipulated, but that makes them not fun as well. So, when you see things that are like, oh, enrollment's gone down, you know, 2%, well, that's 32 kids, you know, that's really in the big scheme of things. That wouldn't be a lot. Or, we could say enrollment's gone up 1.5%. That's amazing, but is that, just does that mean that one year that there were 12 more kids born? Like, I just, I just really think that we need to be careful when we hear things out in public and when we're talking, that we see that these are the actual numbers, and they don't always have much to do with us. They have to do with how many kids were born.
I think one thing about this data is what's maybe the most important is, is more stability. We're not, like, what, sort of what you're saying, Maria, is that, you know, we're not seeing large growth or large decreases. It's stabilizing, which really helps with planning. And, and so, like, adding the 80 pre-K students, you know, they'll be coming in as kindergartners. And I understand that dilemma, because it's not the whole class of pre-K, right? Because the other pre-K kids are in other places. So, so it's hard to factor that in, because it doesn't represent a full class. But, what this does show us is that, that projection, to me, is very positive in terms of planning, course offerings, all those types of things.
Other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is James.
I will. She's still on cloud nine, not cloud eight.
Great, so we are moving on to Item C, Business Office Operations and Financial Reports. Mrs. George, how are you?
Good, how are you? There's not too much to report on the financial end of September. In the general fund, we had $6.99 in cash, which ties to the cash flow. We'd expended approximately 13.25% of our budget, and the receipts, the revenues, show that we received 65.37%, but again, most of that is in a receivable from taxes. Again, this month, to talk about cafeteria, there's not much to say. It's too soon. We haven't received the revenues, and we haven't received the bills to pay for September, so it's hard to report on that. Federal grants, happy to report that we filed our GEAR FS10F, our final report, and our ESAR FS10F final report. We're working on our ARP report, but we still have time for ARP that goes longer for stimulus. I do have a handout here. I've been working on our budget development calendar, and the things in yellow are what I need help with from the board, and it's scheduling of the finance committee meetings. I think we have new members on the finance committee. I can't remember the name, some are new. But if I could get some input by the, hopefully, at least a week before the next meeting, it'll help with the presentation. And if you see any typos or anything, please let me know. And I left the finance committee dates all still 2023, because that's when they were last year, just as a reference point. The other thing I have been working on, the audit committee will be interviewing external auditors by the end of the month, and I'm working on developing questions. If anybody has sat on our interview committees, this is the template we use. So, I'm developing questions. If anybody has questions they want asked of these interviewees, if you send them to me, I'll craft them and get them into the document, and I'll try to get them done and out to everybody on that interview committee before the date of the interviews. And I think that's all I had. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Manfredi.
All right. Today's lesson is, don't do things in a vacuum, because I've made a lot of sheets, and then I realized after printing them all out, they look the same. You're going to get this first sheet, and I'm going to ask you to put 2223 final on top of it. This is the final grid from last year, but this year's grid looks just like it, and you're going to confuse them. So, when you get this one, I should have put a heading on it. I did not do that. That's what you're getting first. And then, I'm going to have the other one out totally separate. So, this is 2223 final. Last I reported to you was in March. The end of the year came and went. These are the final numbers that reconciled through the audit. You'll see that in salaries and benefits, we significantly performed the budget in a positive. Same with the equipment. You're going to see some swings that happened in supplies and contractual, and also slightly in textbook software tuition. The final number for the supplies was some additional state-aided equipment that came in, and it just, that's how the final bill reconciled. Same with contractual. In that 132,000, which we were projecting over budget, most, well over 100,000 of that comes from a single high-needs case of replacement. And some of the bump that you see in the supplies is actually buried in that number as well, so there is a bit of an offset with some of that as well. Again, all of, all of those things come together. You'll see in the debt service transfers, that's extra from the federal summer school program and the federal charges. So, long story short, in terms of expenditures, we came in 163 and change to the good. Where we really, did really well in our budget is the revenue portion of that. You'll see that the numbers came in tremendously strong. The big numbers, especially in state aid, was because of the new pre-K, and also, interest earnings came in extremely strong at the 368. You are going to see, our projection for FEMA did go down from what we were projecting. One payment was ultimately denied. We are still waiting on one payment of $39,000, which we believe we're getting, but they've gone radio silent, but they haven't denied it, so there you go. But, long story short, when it comes to expenditures, we were 163 to the good. When it comes to revenues, we were 1.4 to the good, bringing us at 1.6 to the good overall. As you track the rest of the numbers down, you'll see staffing and the rest remains studied through the end of the year, as you would expect. And then, on the next page, I'm sorry, the back of that page, you'll see the updated reserve fund balances. The 13.88 is where we came in. More on best practice of this is going to be shared in future meetings, but spoiler alert for those of you that can't wait, that number should be in the 20s, and you'll see that for a number of years, we've been leaning in our reserves, and so, the state's going to tell us that best practice is in the 20s, and so, that's just something to put on your radar. How you do that and where you do that's obviously up to you, but we wanted to give you the long-term projection on that. You're now going to get a second sheet. I'm sorry, any questions on that? Okay, now, you're going to get another sheet, and on the top of this sheet, you're going to write 2324. That is the new sheet for this year. Oh, Jess, while you're doing that. You may.
Maybe it's obvious, but when we add the, we added the extra, not the extra, but we were able to have five UTK classes, right? And then, when we're making the budget, but we don't know that there's five classes, how do we?
Yep. That comes out of federal grants, so that's not part of the general fund. So, what impacted the revenues is the integrated program into the pre-K. And we hired staff, but on, for three and four-year-olds, the county pays us back.
Okay, that was, that's.
Where that revenue stream came, and that Mrs. Marinaccio was talking about. Last year, it was a, what did you call it? It wasn't fully approved. Last year, it was a trial year.
Oh, yeah, so.
Like a trial year.
A preliminary approval.
But now, we have final approval for it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, on the top of the sheet you just got, that has the two yellow boxes on the top, you're going to write 2324 slash November. This is the first grid for this year. So, I did a little bit in looking back over this grid, we started well where we're in gap elimination. We started when we were making more fluctuations in personnel through the year. A lot of the numbers I found repeat themselves, so I've tried a simplified model here. If you like it, great. If not, I still have the old model and go from there. But, long story short, what I put here was, the first column was the 2223 budget, so that's last year, and then the 2223 final, which are the numbers that you, we just went over on the last sheet. So, those two columns match, right? I then put this year's budget, and then, moving on from there, you're going to see the early projections through the middle of the year here, because that's really where the meat of this is. By the time we get to the end of the year, we have a pretty good idea where we are. We're in budget season, we're talking about it more. So, at this point, you're going to see, we're pretty much hitting our targets on salaries and benefits. You're going to see that, you know, we're slightly under it, but percentage-wise, we're right on target. The good news of a lot of that is that we have brought in a lot of folks that, in previous years, we were paying BOSIs for. We haven't seen the November BOSIs bill yet, so we're going to see, hopefully, a significant reduction in that bill, because we're paying the salary, so there is a little robbing Peter paying Paul. So, the fact that we're that close, there actually is an offset coming, but we haven't gotten the BOSIs bill yet to show that number. But, long story short, after all the hiring is done, we're slight, slightly under budget, which means we're not over budget, which is what you should be worried about, right? Again, way too early to figure all this stuff out, but we're trending to look good in contractual and supplies. Everything else is pretty much zeroed out. There's not a lot to do this early in the year. Really, this first announcement is to let you know that what you plan to do in May and June, or April and May, when we approve the budget, when we got the school year up and running, we're doing it. There's no major expenses between the budget we forecasted and the program we opened in September. So, that's really the big takeaway at this point, that we didn't need something major to open the buildings. You will see that in the debt service transfer, we are projecting to be 150 to the good on that one. Remember, negative numbers are to the good on top. That was because we budgeted the 250 for the capital outlay, which did not pass. We can only use 100,000 on that, so that's where that 150 comes in, because that didn't pass. You'll see, again, very, very early projections in terms of revenue. Again, all you need to know is that we're not in the danger zone, right? It's way too early to say how good we are, but this is not a red flag at this moment. But, long story short, in terms of revenue, I'm sorry, in terms of expenditure, right now, we're saying we're 215 to the good. In terms of revenue, we're saying we're about 37 to the good, meaning we're at about 250 to the good overall at this point in the year. When I do it on the bottom, and this is where I talked about simplifying it, I noticed that as I was pulling the staffing numbers across, I was basically repeating the numbers all the time. I chose, I made the executive decision, you can tell me I was wrong, but just to kind of give you, we're going to do a kind of a, what did we do to start the school year? Where are we mid-year and kind of where do we end up? Because so many of the numbers, now that we've kind of stabilized the program, I was just pulling the same numbers across, which I'm happy to do if you want. But, long story short, what I did here is I put our staffing numbers in June of '22, our staffing numbers of June of '23. It's on the back. Sorry, yours is bigger. Sorry. There you go. Sorry, on the back. I have a different sheet than you. June of '22, June of '23, and then, September of '23, just to kind of show you the trending. While it does look like we're up, again, I want to tell you, we offset a number of folks that we used to pay BOSIs. BOSIs classes we used to pay for that we've now brought back in, and BOSIs providers that we used to pay for are now in-house. So, the numbers are looking really, really good in terms of that. Teacher aides, I don't want you to be overly deceived by that 1808 number. We still have five positions we get to fill for the school year, so that number's probably 200 hours under what it should be, so that number pretty much is going to be consistent to last year. The good news on that is, though, we had an increase of number of mandated aides, pre-K and the rest of that, so we actually eliminated aides, and then, we found new mandated aides that we had to put in, but it's more or less an even offset. We didn't just add aides, if that makes sense. So, we had to add some, but we also cut equal. So, technically, we're equal, but we're cutting where we can, if that makes sense. No? Yes? Okay. If not, I'll explain it later. So, long story short, the hours look the same, and again, the same fund balance projections are there that I put in on the previous sheet. That's just a duplicate of the page before. So, we've started the school year, running the program that you budgeted us to run, with no major concerns or red flags at this moment, either in terms of personnel or not.
What question?
No more comments or anything.
Sure.
The, when you take, when the board takes a look at the report, the cash flow report has a lot of value, and we look at the cash flow report, extends out for the whole year, but when we get actual numbers, then they're updated at that point for the actual numbers for the month, for example, like September, you have a projection. Now, they're actual for the month of September.
Correct.
Which is really good. And then, as you look out, the cash flow then ties into the treasury report very nicely. And then, there's also a connection with revenues and appropriations status report as it relates to those two other reports, and then, certainly, the report that Mark just went over. Another question on the report that Mark just gave up, those are updated through November '23, just as you have it here, or is it the September reports?
No, that's updated through now.
They were updated as of, when did I do this? They were updated as of, when did I do this? I either did it at the end of last week or on Monday. I ran appropriation status and I ran revenue status.
That makes sense, because when I look at the appropriation status for salaries in September, there's quite a few large variances that are in there, but here, two months later, they make up for it, because either, because this includes salaries from all different areas, other than just teaching.
Correct.
All the salary line items. And right now, the teaching, at least in September, when I try to tie all these reports, that was a question.
Right. And where we're going to see that theoretically, as I cross my fingers, are the, did we bring two back this year? Two 8-1-1s?
One.
One back.
One additional.
We brought an additional 8-1-1 back from BOSEs. We brought OT back from optimal therapy. So that would be in contract, so it's not a, it's like hard to do. You can't say, this one goes to that one, this one goes to that one. But I'm working on keeping very, very close track to it.
No, that's, that's good. And the fact that there was such a variance between this and the appropriation status report is because of.
It's because it's, this one is more up to date.
The dollars are November, the hiring is September, but we haven't hired new teachers since September anyway.
Yeah. It all makes sense to me. It's good work.
Talking about these reports that I reported out.
Mobile sports wagering line, 697,000.
Yeah. It's not new money.
It's not. It doesn't, just the plans.
I was, I was so happy, I thought, yay, but it's not.
Go and bet really big on 12 men on the field on the last play.
It's the same as lottery aid. It's a carve-out from our state aid.
That's why I didn't hear that that was the case, that there's no windfall, because that's a staggering number.
Oh, we all got very excited.
But then it comes on. No, the information's great, thank you.
Can I just, one more? Oh, I'm sorry. Anything else on those sheets? I want to talk about this.
I just want to thank you again first, this year, because this really, really helps us, doesn't it? I mean, I'm sure it's not easy to do, but it's extremely appreciated.
And it'll get us through the thick of this. We found that it's used during, once the budget conversation is happening in the first year, month or two of the year, but it's this thick of that mid-year surprise, and that's what it's designed to prevent. I'm, just for the board's purview, I kind of, we cut out all of the teaching area by tenure area, so you have this sheet here. There is one thing I want to alert you to, because I used two different metrics on the same sheet, which I shouldn't have. This, in the sixth assignments, that is number of sixth assignments. That's not the FTE equivalent. So to find out the FTE equivalent, you basically divide that 17 and 1/2 by 5, because five classes as a full-time teacher. So we basically have about three teachers' worth of sixth assignments, but everywhere else, it's an FTE. And then, without notice, I switch it to number of assignments, and I just missed it until I saw it, said it out loud. So, don't think, because we have five elementary sixth assignments, that that means there's 46th assignments. There's not. There's only five. It's that. So this column is number of assignments, every other column is number of FTEs. Does that make sense?
Those three teachers' worth of sixth assignments.
So if we didn't have the sixth assignments, we would need to hire three, just over three more full-time people. But, we can't do that, because they're all scattered all over.
Well, that's the benefit of it. The total cost is not much different, but the benefit is, is that you can, you can target where you're assigning these people, rather than trying to find a .1 English.
Cost, the salary cost is not much different, the benefit savings and that stuff.
No doubt.
Plus, it allows us to do the little 2Z, 1Z things that I can't, I couldn't hire, you would have a whole list of people teaching .1 and .2.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Which you can't hire.
That's the real benefit.
So that's, all of that comes together. But just, I did switch my metric, for some bizarre reason, halfway through my sheet.
Right. This is very useful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Freddie, the, I would point out to the board, however, that at this point in time, which is of course very early and preliminary, that we're projecting $253,000 surplus at the end of the year, but we need $568,000 in order to replace the appropriated fund balance. So in order to avoid about $300,000 worth of cuts in the following year's budget, or increasing taxes by an equivalent amount, we, we need to see that number, as the months go by, become a little more optimistic, and so that we, so that we announce. This past year, obviously, we didn't do it on the expenditure side, but on the revenue side, we did. You know, the revenue side bailed us out last year, allowing us to replace the appropriated fund balance and have money to transfer to reserves. But, but if this were to continue as it appears right here, not only would there be no money to transfer to reserves, but we would not be able to replace the appropriate fund balance. So, we have just had to watch this. I know it's too early, and it's, it sounds like doom and gloom, but it isn't, because as Mark says, this is very, very preliminary. But the board needs to watch it closely over the next November.
Good point. Other questions are coming? Thank you. Very much. On to item D, capital F. Yep. That lasts, this week, one minute. And just to give you a little bit of update, the middle school debt projects, we were hoping that the bids would come in, or than the one bid that came in. The one bid came in $285,000, it was by Mullenberg Bets. They will be the ones that are doing the funding project at the middle school. And Dan, please correct me if I say anything incorrectly.
No, you're doing fine.
Phase one bidding, we should be approving the bids at the February 7 meeting. They're going to go live in the beginning of December, and then they have the pre-bid walk, I think it's on December 21st, with the potential contractors, and then, there's all these different steps that go through it. But eventually, February 7 is the date, we should get the information on January 30th, February 7 is the date the board should be approving phase one, all the contractors for that. The domestic water system at the middle school, determined that we need not one, but two, three-inch services. No more service, for some reason, no one knows why, was disconnected years ago. So what we're going to be doing during this phase is we're going to be working on the valve piping and work for future service reconnections. Eventually, at a further capital facilities project, we're going to have to address this. So all the work that they're doing now is going to help in that next project, when it has to be done, but it's going to be hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we're solving the problem now, but long-term, there's going to be, there's going to have to be a long-term solution eventually. Gym doors at the high school, if you've ever been in there, when it's sunny out, the glare that comes into the gym is very, it's very prominent. So what they've been doing is they've been taking those blue pads, and they put them up against the doors to block the glare, the sun, from coming in. So we don't want to keep doing that, when we get these new doors replaced. So, Blue Devil Design is going to be working with Young &amp; Right's design team, and they're going to create a vinyl film to put over the doors, so then that will reduce the glare that comes into the gym. I think it was really cool to have our Blue Devil Design working with our architect's design team. Parkdale is going to be consolidating their data closets, which ultimately will save us money in renovation costs and creating additional storage for the teachers. Engineers are currently working on phase two, and I want to mention something about the attorneys. So, phase one contract, all of the contractors and the contracts are going to be reviewed by Webster Zany, and they're going to be vetted by the attorneys prior to all of the bids that come to us. And there's a template that they're using for all of the bids, so they're not going to have to go back through every single one. It'll be a template, it'll be done before the bids are out, to make it so much easier for everyone. But they still will be reviewing the insurance by the insurance companies. So they're hoping by doing it this way, it would save us money, and it's the same result, but just doing it all once and beforehand.
Yep. Can I interject?
Yes, please do.
The templates are with Drew right now at Webster Zany, and he's reviewing the templates. They're AIA documents, and they're like 104, 204, all these different documents. They're basically the same when we award bids. The only thing that changes is the name of who it's being awarded to, the dollar amount of the contract, and the scope.
And then someone obviously will be checking for the certificates of insurance.
Yes, the architects, and BCC does all of that, and they make sure that we have all those things in place. But then it makes the awarding of the bids more timely than having to go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And the Mullenberg Bets one, the template was vetted already with previous work that we've done, so the contract we're awarding tonight, it's just Mullenberg Bets changed, the insurance, the things that we check.
That was it. It was a very short meeting, it was, I think, under an hour, which is like the shortest it's ever, ever been.
So that's probably because I kept quiet.
You asked great questions. So that is it. And we'll be meeting again in December, and I'm sure we'll have a lot more information, because at that point, they will be, more information as far as the bids in phase one. Any questions?
The plumbing thing about this building, just to, anybody who lives in an old house knows that plumbing can be the major cost problem associated with owning the house. And that's the case with this building. This, I mean, parts of this building are over 100 years old, and we're, plumbing is coming, packing up on us, sort of.
It's good that as we're fixing the current problem, we are preparing to solve any new problems down the road, which will ultimately save us money. Do they have a general idea how long down the road is? Like, we're fixing the current problem, looking at.
I would think we would be looking at another project in three to four years.
Well, whenever that.
When that next step is falling off.
It's going to be an expensive project. Four years, 10 years. Yeah. But again, they're going to, they're probably going to work now for that, which will save us money ultimately in three or four years, or whenever the project.
Hoping to design and find, investigate and find where the issues are.
Any updates? Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to item E, pre-K student, nothing.
Yeah, so we sent you the report. Mr. Maranaccio did some research on what other schools are doing, and so we kind of sat down and talked about it, and the one thing I guess we're going to kind of look into is, one, the one piece that is problematic is the three-year-olds riding on the bus, because they, our seats are booster seats. And so, there's, there's some, there's some issues related to parents getting on the bus and locking them in, those kinds of things. So we're going to look into that a little more, to see what that looks like, see if we can do it maybe differently, and work with those parents. And we put on, we put on, I asked you to look at how many three-year-olds we've had in the program, and it's kind of go hand-in-hand with the number of kids we have overall. Obviously, this year, we have the most, because it's going to 80, 80 students. So just like, what does it look like for next year, and can we work with those families to look at transportation maybe differently, until they turn four? So like, they have to turn four by December 1st, so it's only for the first one, two, or three months. Two or three months, depending on when their birthday is, and trying to work with those families to see if we can come up with alternatives to having them ride the bus. And so, I think, I mean, there are some concerns about small kids being on the bus and being able to exit and things like that. Those are issues, but, same time, it's kind of is what it is. You know, unless, unless we don't, you know, we decide not to transport them, that would be the alternative. But, I don't think that that's where we want to go. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I think the three-year-olds is a more significant issue, just because of the regulations, actually, that are involved. Getting people on the bus, there's, there's all kinds of things, technicalities, we just need to watch out for.
When we visited Parkdale, we watched them all get off the bus. It was, they did fine. Although they were very small.
Yeah, they are. Yes, they are.
So well-behaved, so organized, just everybody flowing brain in and waiting in line for their turn. It really was impressive seeing those little ones do that.
Well, they have a good process over there.
Yeah, they really do.
How to deal with that.
Very, very, very organized. They keep a close eye on them. Even on day one, when you see them get off the bus, a few of them drop off the bus, and they start looking around like, where am I? Somebody query quickly comes by and scoops them up.
One young man was in such a hurry to get into the entrance to the school, he ran out of his boots.
So I think Brian, to your point, are able to address that issue with, probably, you know, explore what those different options are, from my perspective. I think if we eliminate that blessing, that would be very challenging for families, being able to participate, so trying to find a solution that works.
Very much so.
When we met at Parkdale, Leonard, from First Student, came over, and he brought another bus driver with him to talk about the pre-K. That bus driver didn't seem to think there was as big of a problem. He said the first couple of weeks, that's when the parents were coming on the bus and helping them, but after that, it settled down. He didn't seem to think that there was that big of an issue at all. And as Kim reported, they do bring seatbelts into the pre-K classes and teach them how to use them as a buckle, et cetera, as a way, so they're familiar with it.
Sounded like they were definitely addressing the concerns as much as possible, especially when there's a large number that had to go to after-school care, and they were providing an aid. Sounded like they were aware of the problems we're addressing.
We can, we can work with them too, because I believe that some of the buses are, have significantly more than others. So if you have two, it's different than if you have six or eight of the three-year-olds.
And I think it's that one, it seemed like the concern is that one run after school to the after-care program that might be the biggest challenge.
Yeah, so that's, we're going to look at that sub too, work with Leonard to see how we can balance it out, and, you know, work with Mr. Maranaccio, Mrs. Mantoha, and Mr. Martin.
Keep us up to date.
Yeah, I will.
They were very reassuring.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13, is there anyone who wishes to remove an item from the consensus Hearing none, may have a motion. By Mr. Daniel Second and by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. Hold on a second.
Aye.
No. 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 No.
First of all, I want to congratulate the district on looking for a positive approach to intervening in the case of disciplinary issues. It's, it's a big step forward, and I know it's already being done. And it's a big step forward from the old crime and punishment model that we used for many years where you publish a list of things children can do wrong and then right next to it, you put what punishment is, you know, and the youngster walks in with that piece of paper and says, give this to me and stop trying to tell me what to do. That, and I know this from experience because I was an assistant principal for a number of years. So the, so this is, this is a terrific step in the right direction to look for ways for young people to change their motivation, to change their approach to life and to restore positive energy. The only suggestion I have further, and I'm sure it's already being done, but I think we ought to attend to the concept of prevention as well. Not just restoring what went wrong, but having an active program to prevent the things from going wrong to begin with. What leads to mind as an example might be group counseling sessions where the councilies are learning skills that would prevent the activity that is in effect, they're referring to begin with because they've, they've learned significant coping skills that would get them through it rather than behaving inappropriately in that particular circumstance. That's just an example of one thing and I'm sure we're doing some of this stuff. But I, but I, sometime down the road, when we're having reports, and I'd like to hear more about restorative practices, but I'd also like to hear more about the kinds of things we're doing in, in the, in the area of prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item 19, superintendent recommends the Board of Education declare the items outlined in your agenda as surplus or obsolete. May have a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Blowers. Second by Mrs. O'Wiler, discussion.
Well, yeah, I'm going to chime in on this one too, extending this very efficient meeting along. These, these three tools, I believe were in my classroom when I taught in this building 50 years ago. They're Rockwell Delta machines. They sent us email photographs of them. If you, if you dived into some of those JPEGs, they're, the, where's the origin? The Rockwell Delta commercial woodworking tools are very high-quality tools. They're very expensive, they're, they last forever, they have parts available for them and they're very, very high-quality pieces of equipment. However, we don't do much woodworking anymore. And for a bandsaw and a joiner and a drill press are, are significant tools for the woodworker and perhaps no longer needed by the school district. So I would venture to say they have some value and I would like to see the district make a few bucks if you're going to, if you're going to get rid of them. Thank you.
Were these the ones that were outside the room? Yes, they were, so when we went on the, the high school visitation, they were caution taped off. And I mean, they, you could see how old they really, really were.
Well, if they're stored outside, they're toast.
They were inside, outside, they were in the hallway. And I do believe Mr. Brunson said, correct me if I'm wrong, that they were going to contact auction somebody or something?
Auction, probably.
Thank you. Because, to your point, if there's any value in them.
There is.
Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education declare Parkdale math materials listed in your attachment as surplus, surplus and obsolete due to the adoption of the new math program. May have a motion. Moved by Mrs. O'Wiler, second. Second by Mr. Blowers, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the novel purchase, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night, as detailed in your attachment. May have a motion. Question? All of you in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the contract for the middle school drainage project as detailed in your agenda. May have a motion. By Mrs. O'Wiler. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cassidy, discussion.
Well, just to say that we have a history of working with this, with this contractor in the past successfully.
Thank you. That's great, great information to have and congrats on it being less than initially anticipated, though more than we last heard and here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item E, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the shared transportation agreement with the DePew Union Free School District as detailed in your attachment. May have a motion. Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second by Mrs. O'Wiler, discussion.
So can you, someone explain what this is?
It's a very small thing.
Student government is going to a contest, I believe, is what?
Correct. And we have a shortage of bus drivers. So we're finding a win-win situation for getting the kids there.
Thank you. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item F. You may have a motion.
Yes? Sole source provider for Gaggle.
I have a motion to approve the sole source provider.
Gaggle.
For Gaggle, as detailed in your agenda.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Blowers. Second by Mrs. O'Wiler, discussion.
How long have we been using Gaggle?
Two years or three? Before I came here, so.
Three years, I believe. And sole sourcing is part of the state comptroller's audit, so we're getting ahead of what's going to be in their recommendations, that the board is aware that we couldn't competitively bid this because there's.
Well, it's a proprietary.
So you'll be seeing more and more of these.
So it has, Gaggle been worth $10,000 a year, $11,000 a year?
Yes, on little things, but on the one or two, luckily, there's only one or two big things a year we catch. It's, you'd pay 10 times that.
So it searches all the stuff.
Yeah, that's the one that monitors our devices.
Have the emails and.
Say something is the anonymous reporting, the kind of.
Yeah, it's two different, two different problems.
It's, it's, I can think of one incident that you'd be happy to pay easily 10 times that for what a cop.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item G, may have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing piggyback purchasing on Erie County New York Division of Purchase.
If I move.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second. I know.
I'm all over.
Second by Mrs. O'Wiler, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. All right, let's see who's awake. We are on item 20A. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the EFA as detailed in your attachment. May have a motion. Second by Mrs. Prot, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the MOA between the district and the EFA, the next one, as detailed in your attachment.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second. Second by Mrs. O'Wiler, discussion.
Yes, please. I understand this has to do with the, the new positions that have been created for occupational therapists, occupational therapists. What are the financial implications of this then amendment?
They're not, and we can.
That's what I'm tracking for the grid because we're not using an outside person anymore. So we had a contracted person. So I'm watching what we paid last year versus the new hires versus their benefits. But it's too soon in the year to make sure that we're not really going to use the contracted.
Yeah. So I guess the question I have is now that we have a formal agreement, or we will after we vote on this, with the Eastern Faculty Association to represent these people, how will that affect their negotiations for their salaries and benefits? In other words, we, we, I assume when we employ these folks, we utilize some other means of determining their salaries and benefits other than through negotiations. So how does, what is this moving?
Well, in the, in the past, we used to just go to an agency and the agency would pay them. So that was it. This, and this is the right way. I'm not going to lie, it's probably going to cost a little bit more, not anything of concern, but the amount of flexibility and freedom and ability to choose good providers because when you work with an agency, they send you, they send you and then if you don't like them, they send it back. So it basically, it does and doesn't, the OTs are basically lumped in with teach, not lumped in, but lumped in with teachers and the CODAs are equivalent to the nurses. So they're going to work basically in that, in that framework.
So does that mean they'll be on the teacher's salary schedule?
OT will.
And how much does that differ from what they're currently being paid?
What, they're currently being paid at this year.
Oh, so when you hire them for this year, you put them on the teacher's.
Yeah, that's the disconnect. I'm sorry.
I wanted to know whether you, whether you had reached an individual agreement with this one regarding their salary.
No, what happened was because it is a significant adding, we agreed with the principal how to treat these people, but because it's a significant change to the contract, like they're under ERS, not TRS, the amount of time lawyers on both sides had to go back and make sure all of those little things are done is why it's taken this long. So, yes.
I just wanted to be sure that we, that this was not, that doing this was not going to significantly change their, their salaries or benefits.
No, it, what it does is cement the salaries and benefits that they were promised. Yes.
Also provides continuity for the kids.
And, yeah, it's, it's, it's a win-win. Disconnect, I apologize, Dan.
No.
Hiring.
I wondered when we hired them, what, what category that's been under. Now this cleans it up.
Yes.
Occupational therapy has grown consistently over the last 10 years. And so bringing them on staff allows us to control who we're hiring because we have had some issues with some of the, from, from the organization before, so it'll improve the quality, it lets us control their schedules. Contracts do limit some, some, some types of therapies and things like that. So it's just a much better model for the district for the long run and we're certainly at a point where the, bringing them in makes a lot of sense.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item 21, is there any other new business to come before the board? Okay, item 22, those that will be upcoming meetings, and workshops and conferences, that would be the dinner that Paul is attending. Thank you very much. And speedboarding on November 30th, if anyone is interested, please reach out to us. Second by Mr. Dino, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Thank you very much. December 13.